Okay, the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order this evening on Tuesday, January 11th at 7 o'clock PM. Board Trustees present are Winford Adams, Karma Correa, Kelly Hodges, Justine Durant, Dr. Deborah Jensen, and Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask that everyone turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices at this time. Tonight's presentation of colors will be led by the Westfield Mustang Army JROTC. The pleasures will be led by Battalion Commander Fabian Cimeros. The color guard commander carrying the US flag is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Fabian Canares. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Corporal Leah Brown. Left rifle is Cadet Private First Class Virgil Mott. Right rifle is Cadet Private First Class Mayo Colazo. And the Westfield Mustang JROTC is led by Major Charles Thompson. At this time, will everyone please stand? Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one state, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I flag allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Or earth, arms, outward, face, our, arms, us, the others, free and arms, or earth, arms, outward, face, art, eye, art, all are art. I'd like to ask if everyone could still remain standing and that we take a moment of silence to observe in your own way. Thank you. You may now be seated. The next item on tonight's agenda is a presentation of proclamations and recognition for the Board's Appreciation Month. At this time, I'd like to recognize our General Counsel, Jeremy Brinkley.
So normally, I would be at my seat, but I thought the occasion called for a little bit more formality. And so, good evening, President Durant, Board of Trustees. I'm excited to announce that January is Board Appreciation Month. This is our opportunity to celebrate you, our trustees, who volunteer your time and energy. And make no mistake, it is a lot of time and energy that you guys volunteer to ensure all of our students and children have the opportunity to learn and grow. So we have some special guests with us tonight to celebrate you. You may have noticed there are a few more people on our Zoom tonight than usual. But first, we will begin with the presentation of proclamations. And so I would like to start by inviting Mr. Brad Machinsky, representing Harris County Precinct 4 Commissioner R. Jack Kegel to the podium.
Hello, members. My name is Brad Machinsky here, representing Commissioner R. Jack Kegel. And each of you should have a proclamation from him in front of you. And the commissioner wanted me to come out to extend his appreciation to all the board members, the superintendent, the principals, and students and teachers that are a part of the Independent School District. And he's just really grateful for the job that you've been doing and continue to do. And hopefully, it's success last years. So I'm going to read you the proclamation he had presented to you guys. As Precinct 4 Commissioner of Harris County, Texas, and on behalf of the constituents of Harris County, it is our honor to recognize you and to offer our sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership you've provided Spring Independent School District. Your hard work and dedication have made a significant impact on the lives of the students, families, and educators in our community. Therefore, I hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month. Again, the commissioner is grateful for all the work you do and continue to do. And thank you for having me here today. And you all have a nice night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Machinsky. I would also like to invite Mr. Garrett Alzine, representing Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee's office, to the podium.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to present here today. I'm here representing Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee's office. She's currently in Washington DC. She gave three speeches on the floor today. One about voting rights and that fight that's going on. One about our National Guard troops and the importance of taking care of them. And then a final speech on the Honorable Harry Reid, who is the Majority Leader who allies state and the Capitol. So she's very busy working on behalf of her constituents and working on behalf of school districts and students to bring necessary resources down to the district. So she sends her most appreciation and respect down to the school board for the tremendous work you all will do here today. And she sent me on her behalf to present these certificates on the occasion of National School Board Appreciation Month. So I'll have a certificate for each school board member. And I'll read that certificate now, and then I'll present this certificate to the chair. So this is a certificate of congressional recognition from the 18th Congressional District of Texas, presented to Dr. Deborah Jensen, President, in recognition of National School Board Appreciation Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the constituents of the 18th Congressional District of Texas, I take great pride in saluting Dr. Deborah Jensen, and please insert your school board member name, in recognition of National School Board Appreciation Month. Your commitment to supporting the students of Spring Independent School District reflect the pride that exemplifies the spirit of Houston and the great state of Texas. Your efforts are most deserving of the respect, admiration, and commendation for the United States Congress. Sheila Jackson Lee, Member of Congress, January 11th, 2022. So I'll deliver this to your team member, and we'll make sure that everyone gets one. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for being here.
President Durant, I think that was directed for you. And I really appreciate everything that our representative does for our school district. And she's one person who shows up at graduations. She so shows up at special activities we have. She was one of the first to help us get vaccinations in our district. So we thank her very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank Mr. Machinsky and Mr. Alzine for being here with us this evening. Let me get back to my script. And so we have two more proclamations this evening. The representatives from these offices were not able to be with us tonight, but I do want to make sure they get presented to the board appropriately. So the first is the proclamation from Harris County Precinct 1 Commissioner Rodney Ellis. His representative wasn't able to be with us this evening, but I will present this. There's one for each of you. And the proclamation reads, "In honor of School Board Recognition Month, thank you for your consistent dedication and hard work in governing Spring Independent School District. We are truly grateful for your efforts during these unprecedented times to ensure students and their communities have a solid school system structure that they can rely on, January 11th, 2022." And finally, we have a proclamation from City of Houston Mayor Sylvester Turner. His representative was unable to be with us this evening as well. This is the proclamation. "So School Board Appreciation Month, whereas the Houston area is wonderfully enriched by its most vital resource, inspired individuals who are willing to serve the public in all sectors. Through tireless personal service and leadership, professionals and community volunteers alike work daily to improve the quality of life for all. And whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. Local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. They work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas, local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. They are strong advocates for the public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. And whereas, during the month of January 2022, the City of Houston will observe in honor of School Board Appreciation Month, the City of Houston commends the Spring Independent School District and its Board of Trustees for working diligently to improve the lives of the youth and extends best wishes for its continued success. Therefore, I, Sylvester Turner, Mayor of the City of Houston, hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as School Board Appreciation Month." So if everybody would join me in a round of applause. Now I would like to introduce a short video that the district has put together honoring the hard work that our Board of Trustees has done. And I will ask Mr. Mike King to play that video for us.
January is National Board Appreciation Month, and we want to take the time to celebrate our Spring ISD Board of Trustees. Our board members are dedicated to closing the gaps in education, and they have made that a major priority with every student, every teacher, every day. Their commitment to making sure all students and staff have the resources to succeed is the reason why we want to say, "Thank you."
Because of you, I have access to a Chromebook, which helps me in and outside of the classroom.
I have more time to learn in all-day pre-k.
I can now graduate with my high school diploma and barbering license, making it easy to get a job right out of high school.
I will score right now in Spanish and other languages. Muchas gracias, mesera activa.
I have the opportunity to come back to high school and graduate with the ASAP program.
I have another school choice opportunity to earn a high school diploma and an associate's degree by the time I graduate.
I have a state-of-the-art stadium to play in on Friday nights.
I can make nineteen dollars an hour and quarterly make three hundred dollars of attendance boxes.
I have a training facility where I can refine my classroom skills to better serve my students.
And I have been recognized and celebrated for the dedication I bring to my job every day.
So now we recognize and celebrate you. Happy National Board Appreciation Month.
January is National Board Appreciation Month.
And so we have a little bit more to go in our program, but first I would like to invite Mr. Alzine back to the podium. Just for a brief moment.
Yes, I spoke with the Congresswoman earlier today, and she made a point to tell me how important it is that I recognize her friend, President Justine Durant. I think earlier I might have mispronounced. There's a recent election. And so, excuse me, in all respects, as World Board Member, but President Justine Durant, we really want to acknowledge and congratulate you since you're a great friend. And so, we really appreciate you. Just wanted to make that quick correction.
Thank you, and she's a great friend, not just to me, but to the district and our students. And we really appreciate it.
Thank you again, Mr. Alzine. Have a great evening. So up next, we have our amazing principals here to celebrate each of you. And we have a special certificate honoring you for your dedicated leadership and continuing service to the children of this community. So we're going to do these one at a time. Is that okay? And we are just going to go in order of position, so that's why we're going to be bouncing around a little bit. But we will begin with position one, Dr. Deborah Jensen. As I invite Christine Guidry, Principal at Spring Early College Academy, to join me at the podium, I would like to present you with this with this certificate of appreciation.
Good evening. Thank you, President Durant, Board of Trustees. It's with great privilege that I'm able to present this basket to Dr. Deborah Jensen. Dr. Jensen, on behalf of Anderson Jenkins and Cooper Elementary School, Dewitt Middle School, Spring Early College, and Spring High School, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize and celebrate all that you do for the student, staff, and community of Spring ISD. Through the years, you have demonstrated your commitment to our community by supporting us as a board trustee, as well as putting in the work on campuses and in the community. You're always ready and willing to sit down with students, parents, teachers, and administrators to do whatever is needed to move our district forward. It is the personal connection that you make with all of us in Spring ISD that makes this work even more special. Dr. Jensen makes it a point to visit campuses, obtain feedback from everyone, to determine the needs and how she can best support the efforts. She's quick to ask two very important questions. What do you need? And what can I do? By knowing what is going on with the stakeholders of our district and community, her leadership and experience, along with the other trustees, is truly invaluable. Dr. Jensen, we appreciate all that you do and hope that you enjoy this basket as a small token of our appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and so next we have position two, Kelly P. Hodges. And so as I invite Dr. Angelus Perez from Reynolds Elementary to join me at the podium, I would like to present you with the certificate of appreciation.
Good evening, everyone. It is my distinct honor to be able to present Ms. Kelly Hodges with a token of our appreciation. Ms. Hodges exemplifies our district leadership definition as being service-oriented. In just reading over her experience and all the dedication and all she's done for our community, she really does exemplify that leadership definition that we hope to strive for here in Spring ISD. During her time as a Spring ISD board member, she has helped navigate us through very uncharted territories during this pandemic. And so we are just so grateful, and we look forward to the continued rise in the future. And this is from your Beneki, Ponderosa, Reynolds, Thompson, Wells, and Westfield family. Thank you.
And so next we have position three, President Justine Durant. And so I will invite Tangi Stith from Link Elementary to the podium, and as she makes her way up, I'll present you.
So I'm already regretting using this very small phone as opposed to large paper, so please forgive me. But I do want to thank you so much for your service on behalf of Decane High School, Clotton Middle School, Heritage Elementary, Link Intermediate, Clark Primary, Lewis Elementary, and Link Elementary. Thank you so much for serving our families, our teachers, our students, and our community since 2006. Like my colleagues have said, this is truly, these past few years have been quite interesting. And we thank you so much for your leadership, President Durant, and we appreciate you. And thank you so much, and that's a small token of our appreciation and love for you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have position four, Winford Adams Jr., and I will invite Asia Presswood from Stalliers Elementary to the podium. Now she makes her way up.
Good evening, President Durant and Board and Trustees. We would like to say thank you to you, Mr. Winford Adams, on behalf of McNabb Elementary, Northgate Elementary, Springwoods Village and Middle School, Spring Leadership Academy, Woodchee High School, and the International School at Stalliers. We just want to thank you for the endless opportunities that you provide for our scholars in Spring ISD. As my colleagues have said, we have charted through some some times that we've all struggled through, and we know that you normally will want to be in our schools, and we cannot wait to accept you back to our schools to instill the love for reading that you have in our scholars. Thank you for those endless opportunities and for entrusting us, our admin, our teachers, and our educators with our scholars in Spring ISD and your very own scholars that you do have that attend here. So again, we say thank you. Thank you for the endless opportunities that you give us. And that basket is just a token of the appreciation that we have for you and all that you do for us in Spring ISD. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is position five, Ms. Rhonda Newhouse. And I will invite Stacy Phillips from Smith Elementary to the podium.
Good evening, President Durant and Board of Trustees. We would like to recognize Rhonda Newhouse, position number five in Spring ISD Board Trustees. I am honored to present you with a gift of appreciation from Spring High School, Robertson Middle School, Twin Creeks Middle School, Hirsch Elementary, Smith Elementary, and Windship Elementary. Your dedication and your service spanning over four years is impeccable. As a teacher, a counselor, and a campus administration, we truly appreciate your dedication towards education. And we recognize this by your service to Spring ISD since 2014. It is an honor to present you with this basket of tokens of swag from each of our campuses. We appreciate your countless hours towards the Spring ISD community, and we look forward to seeing you and every actions that we have here in our community of Spring. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very, very much to each of the schools. I truly, truly appreciate your kindness. This is very sweet. Thank you, thank you. And it looks like you guys know me. Thank you.
And so next we have position six, Carmen Correa. And so I will invite Ms. Shemona Easton from Marshall Elementary to the podium. And as she joins us, I will present. And I believe our principal presenter, Ms. Kenesha Williams from Major Elementary, is virtual with us and is going to say a few words virtually.
Thank you, Jeremy. Ms. Correa, I am representing BAML Elementary, BAML Middle School for International Studies, Hoilin Elementary, Major Elementary, Meyer Elementary, and Westfield High School. Board service is one of the toughest volunteer roles of all. Thank you for taking on this position to perform it with dedication and tenacity. Our board members distinguish themselves as a judicious steward of our organization, and they never flinch in the face of difficult decisions. A famous activist once said, "Wisdom is knowing what to do next. Virtue is doing it." Thank you for being both wise and virtuous. It is your behind-the-scenes work that we are very appreciative of. We would be remiss if we did not thank you for your contributions. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated group of people leading our school district. We want to say thank you for your leadership, your commitment to our scholars, and our community, your support of our district's mission to continually improve the education system for all students. Again, thank you for your service to the Spring ISD community.
Thank you so much.
Next is position seven, Natasha McDaniel. I know Ms. McDaniel is not with us physically this evening, but I do believe she is watching us on the public link. And so we are going to present the certificate, and I would like to invite Ms. Shannon Swearengen from Eichenroh Elementary to come to the podium and say a few words.
So Ms. McDaniel, I know you're here in spirit. And I want you to know that this basket and this lovely cooler and all of this is here from BAML, Booker, Burchett, Decane, Eichenroh, and Marshall Elementary. And we want to thank you very much for your service. I know that you have been a longtime resident in Spring ISD. I know that you have a love for literacy. I know that you are dedicated to being a trustee, and we appreciate that. I also happen to know that you have classroom management. You are a classroom management coach. And when I see you in person, I'm going to ask you if I can hire you, because we definitely need your services. I do want to commend you and thank you for your attention to detail. I know before I do want to commend you and thank you for your attention to detail. I know before Christmas that all of us heard from you, and that was a detail that meant so much to each of us. But thank you so much for your commitment to Spring ISD and to our students, to our campuses, and to our future. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our principals. And I want to say on behalf of the administration and the campuses and the districts, thank you to our Board of Trustees. We appreciate all that you do. You work tirelessly. And you ensure that all of our students get an excellent education. And so with that, I would just like everyone here and principals, when you're online, please unmute to give our board a round of applause as a thank you. With that, President Durant, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Minkley. I'd also like to say thank you to my colleagues. Because we don't get paid monetarily, what we get paid every day when we see the aha moment in our students, when we see their success, you know? And it's not about, we appreciate the recognition. And I also want to recognize my colleagues because it's been a wonderful group of people to work with. Each one of us has a love in our heart for doing what's best for kids. And I think it's why, you know, we've been able to operate, you know, in grace like we do because we put children first. And so I just want to also say thank you to my colleagues and Happy Board Appreciation Month from me. I don't know if anyone else wanted to make a comment? Okay, all right, fantastic. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Our next item is our administrative update. And so we will now hear from our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Durant, members of the board. I'm not going to let the kudos stop just yet. On behalf of administration, I would like to echo our appreciation of our distinguished board members for Board Appreciation Month. We are definitely grateful to have a supportive, engaged board that's always keeping the primary focus on positive academic outcomes for students. We definitely believe as a group that we have the best board in the state of Texas. Even my colleague saying yes. And so I want to thank you all for your guidance and leadership. I think, as you mentioned, President Durant, that many people do not realize the extra commitment our board members take on as volunteers, not to mention the long hours, the late meetings, the added responsibilities. And so we thank you all for everything that you do to support the students in our care each and every day. Once again, one more hand, one more round of applause for the board members. Thank you. And also, just a couple more updates. I'd like to share that we had a very successful launch today of our COVID-19 mega testing site at Planet Ford Stadium. This new site, which was established in partnership with Harris County, is already busy with a site at over 80% capacity today. The site is capped at 300 tests per day by online appointment. And so we're confident that this measure will ensure a smooth and efficient process. And speaking of our county partnerships, I had the opportunity to attend our joint press conference with Judge Lena Hidalgo at Booker Elementary yesterday, where the district received over 2,000 rapid test kits. These test kits are yet another tool for our students and staff to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And we're grateful to Judge Hidalgo for these free tests for our campuses. We're also working on a plan to distribute these tests, as well as any additional free tests we receive over the course of the school year. Additionally, we're continuing to partner with Inspire Diagnostics to provide them to Spring ISD locations at our Family and Community Engagement Center, as well as our Child Nutrition Facility. At these sites, Inspire offers free testing, as well as the addition of free vaccines, something to take advantage of. We continue to keep our positive case numbers updated on a daily basis, which can be viewed via our COVID tracker online. You can always access the dashboard at springisd.org/covidtracker. And we're going to continue to keep our families and staff updated with any additional resources available to ensure the health and safety of our community. Also, as a reminder, our annual school choice application period closed Friday, January 7. For those families submitting applications for our schools of choice and specialty programs, the next major date to be watching for is March 11. On March 11, parents of students who have been entered into the lottery will receive notification of their student's acceptance status. Parents will then be required to notify the campus of their student's intent to attend the selected campus by March 30, 2022. I'd like to extend my gratitude to all of the Spring ISD staff members who have supported the effort to streamline and simplify the application process for our families, including hosting multiple open labs and informational sessions. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Julie Hill to provide an introduction and updates as it relates to the leadership announcements that we shared this morning.
Thank you very much, President Durant, trustees, cabinet members, all assembled here, and those who are joining us online. As you know, we have two vacancies. We had two vacancies at the cabinet level, Chief of Schools and Chief of Communications. And I have the great honor tonight to introduce you to our new team members. So I'm going to ask, as I begin, some comments that our new chief of schools makes his way to the podium, Dr. Miguel Perez. Dr. Miguel Perez has been named Chief of Schools for Spring ISD. He is a former superintendent of Jim Hall County ISD. He currently serves here in our district as the Assistant Superintendent for PKA feeder one. He's previously held additional leadership positions in the district as the Executive Director of Strategic Planning and the Executive Director of Data Management and Compliance. He earned his Bachelor's of Business Administration from Texas State University, a Master of Education from Sam Houston State University, a Doctor of Education from Texas Southern University, and a Master of Business Administration from Baylor University. Dr. Perez will lead the district's 40 schools, as well as the Student Support Services Department. And now you will hear from our new chief of schools.
Good afternoon. Okay, good afternoon. I hope everybody's having a wonderful night. I want to start off by saying that I will continue to pray to make sure that through prayer, we are led in the right direction. I'm also going to say that as we're going through these very challenging times, we will make sure that we work very hard to ensure that we continue to do what is best for students. And there are going to be some challenges, and we're going to work together to make sure that we overcome and have successful academic experience for all of our scholars. I ask for God's speed and grace and your collaboration during the next spring semester, but at the same time, as we work together in this journey together. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Perez. Would also like to introduce our new chief of communications, and if he would make his way to the podium. Lester Gretsch is joining Spring ISD as the new chief of communications. He brings 15 years of experience in media, corporate, and internal and external communications. He previously has supported the Houston Dynamo's marketing and promotion efforts as the Director of Communications. And most recently, he served as a sports anchor and radio personality for Univision. He is trilingual, English, Spanish, and German. He earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Grand Canyon University, and has been awarded multiple Lone Star Emmys for his work in TV news. Mr. Gretsch will lead the team that drives our internal and external communications for the district. And we'll now hear from our new chief of communications.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you also very much for this opportunity. It is incredible. I am humbled. I am grateful for the opportunity, for the chance to open a new chapter in my career in an area that is otherwise foreign to me, which is education. The skills that I bring to the table are varied, and I hope that to put them to good use in a very noble endeavor, which is to not only safeguard the reputation of this school district, but also to tell the good stories that go on in each one of the schools, high schools, middle schools, et cetera. So I am very happy. I am humbled. When I came to Texas in 2004 with my wife in a U-Haul full of things and dreams, I never thought that I would be standing before you all today. So let's let that dream continue. Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for that opportunity to introduce you to our new teammates. And we are excited, and we are going to continue to do great things for Spring ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And with that, we conclude the administrative update this evening. Thank you, President Durant.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if any of the trustees would like to make any remarks or comments.
I would like to thank the greater Spring community for their support and their participation and their devotion during this pandemic. I remember two years ago, I was huddling in my house with wipeies that I would wipe down my groceries with, and I couldn't hug my grandkids and that sort of thing. And we have really come so far. And our school district has been adapting and trying things and forging new areas. I'm just so impressed with everyone who has brought forth their best game here. And I really appreciate all the people in our district who can get vaccinations, who did get vaccinations, and the people who can wear a mask are wearing a mask. That's what's going to really bring us through this. And we have so many people in our district that are participating and helping us all get better. Thank you.
You know, Dr. Jensen, it fills my heart that know that spring administration, school board, teachers, counselors, principals care about our students and what is happening in spring. When I looked at the television report with my husband on the number of COVID cases, and they compared school districts, spring was at the bottom. Katie, way up there, thousands of students, and we were down at the bottom. And he says, how do you all do that? I said, we still mandate masks, and our teachers, our administrators, our staff care about our students. And it shows. That's the only way we can continue to keep this at such a low level. So hats off to Spring ISD on their low COVID rates.
All right, thank you for those comments. I'm just really, it's been a really tough couple of years, you know? It's nice to still be able to celebrate in ways that, you know, we always find ways to continue to move forward, even in tough times. And it's been really challenging for us as a nation, you know? But I'm really proud to be part of a district that moved forward with what's best for kids. We continue to make decisions, tough decisions sometimes, you know? And we'll never, never make everybody happy, but we do move forward with doing what we know is best for kids. And as long as we continue to make those choices, we will continue to move in a positive direction. And again, as trustee Newhouse indicated, it starts in the classroom, you know, with our teachers and our administrators. That's where learning happens. To me, that's the most important part of what we do. Because if we don't get that right, we don't get anything right. And so I just want to thank our teachers because they're on the front line, and the administrators in those buildings that support them. We, as a board, recognize and understand that that is the cornerstone. That's the key. That's where success will happen and occur. And we always want to make sure that we're supporting, supporting our teachers and our staff. So thank you. Our next item is our spotlight item, one of my favorite parts of the board. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Workforce Development, Dr. Matthew Parasal.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board and cabinet. Today's an exciting day. As you had said, your payday is getting the joy of students and the joy of learning. And today is a payday celebration in the spotlight. As part of our strategic plan, we focus on literacy. And we have a multifaceted approach to that. One aspect we know is that when students have the ability to read, that their literacy rates continue to grow and expand in their learning. Unfortunately, Spring's geographic area limits the access to libraries. But because of our board and our commitment to ensure that our students have every opportunity, we've partnered with Renaissance Learning from Myon, which is a digital library of over 6,000 books. Over the Christmas break, the holiday break, we did not want the learning to stop. And our students took up the challenge. We challenged elementary and middle school students to choose their favorite books and take some time to chill out and read. The platform, so utilizing the Myon, that digital library. Books are available in it in both English and Spanish. And our students really took it to heart, logging in daily. They read over 6,210 books and spent over 59,000 minutes reading. That's 983 hours that our students spent reading online. The student competition consisted of two separate categories, most books read and also most minutes spent reading. In the end, we had four students and two campuses that won the Chill Out and Read contest, and we are going to recognize them today. Each of our campuses will be awarded a campus trophy, as well as a banner that they will hang out in front of their school to recognize of the achievement. For our elementary campus, Booker Elementary took the lead with 19,308 minutes spent reading. Recognize them. And Ms. Womack is with us virtually today. Congratulations, Ms. Womack. At our middle school level, Roberson Middle School stood out, where students spent over 1,432 minutes reading. And also, Ms. Principal Brumsey is also with us online today. Congratulations, Ms. Brumsey. Now to our students. Each student winner is presented a trophy, as well as an Amazon Kindle tablet, so they're able to continue to read and have their own device to read beyond the challenge. So please welcome me with celebrating our first student from Booker Elementary, who won with the most minutes, which was 3,900 minutes they spent reading books at or above grade level. And that is Enrique Sanchez. Our next student in elementary is from Marshall Elementary in grade two, and won for the most books with 229 books read on or above grade level. And that is Ariz Husan. At our middle school level, a student from Spring Leadership Academy, won for the most books read by reading 226 books, and also earned a distinction for the most minutes. And that is Jessica Azuma. And our fourth winner is from Roberson Middle School, grade six, with over 1,100 minutes spent reading, and that is Gustavo Rodriguez. And that is Gustavo Rodriguez.
Jim, you think it's possible to bring them a little closer and then the board in the background? If you guys kind of want to gather around my chair?
Sure.
Can we do that? That's one thing about the pandemic, we miss an opportunity to shake their hands and give our babies a hug. But let's get them a little bit closer. Yeah. Is this gonna work? Okay. Hold on to give parents behind you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah. All right, thank you. And we do want to recognize the parents. So you saw many of them coming up to stop the photos. If our parents could please stand, we know that you gave a lot of support as well to make this happen. So our students are available. They're happy to answer questions if you have any questions for them.
I have a question to the group. Do you read that much all the time or was this due to the challenge?
Do you read, do you read that much all the time or is it just because of the challenge?
It was because of the challenge.
We would like to have, make sure that you do other things as well. But I, I assume that this must have been a lot of interesting things you read. Can you tell me one of the interesting things that you thought really entertained you?
The space, looks of the space.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. We got a budding scientist here or engineer?
Not a lot.
Astronaut?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, when you're on the space shuttle, we'll know it started with our contest. Any other questions for scholars? Just the items?
I, I was curious if anybody found a favorite book or favorite author?
I had a favorite book. One of my favorite books was called Egyptian myths. It was about different types of things that Egyptians would do and different types of myths that took place or were told.
Well, good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, my book was about, um, my book, my book's name was of the Jimmy Sniff's Up the President's Nose. It was about, um, the president's, the pre, the president, the president, uh, allergies. The president of the United States suffer him. The book was inside, it was like, so he shrink, Dr. Benson's string, shrink, Jimmy sniffles, and then he went inside the nose and he found a bug. Then he had a sneeze powered powder, then the president chewed. And then, and then Dr. Benson found the bug. Then he, he found that was causing him allergies. And, um, my favorite dialogue was when, when Dr. Benson said, uh, a journey to the center of the nose.
I think we have a future ear, nose and throat doctor here.
My favorite book was about Zeke Meeks selling cake mix. But it's kind of a challenge because there's his like opponents like Grace Chang and Sweet Molly Mae. Sweet Molly Mae is like a little girl. And Grace Chang is like, has evil, sharp nails. And there's some people who say that she could rip off people's faces, which I don't think is true. And then he ends up winning Thrillsville tickets to, uh, yeah, Thrillsville. He won tickets, four tickets to Thrillsville. And he took his grandma, his little sister and his friend.
We, we really appreciate the spotlight and the work of our students. As you can see, they were exposed to fiction, nonfiction, and really expanded even their vocabulary. You know, we hear the word dialogue coming out as, as they're learning and expanding through that opportunity. So thank you so much.
My grandmother always said that reading is the key to knowledge, you know? And it truly is. And so I'm really, really excited and I love when we have an opportunity to, to dialogue with our scholars like that.
President Durant, I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Womack at Booker Elementary for being the top winning school there, the most minutes. I, I know she's a very tough competitor. So I know that next year she's going to be challenging the other elementary schools to read as many minutes as her schools. So congratulations, Ms. Womack, and keep it going.
And Roberson at our second.
Roberson was second place, yes, for our middle school. Hey, challenge is there. Challenge them.
We should say Robertson. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I got excited and lost track. Where are we? Okay, our next item is agenda participation. And this item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda topics. But four of those items are considered by the board. So Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under agenda participation this evening?
No, Madam President, not for agenda participation.
Okay. All right. So at this time, the Board of Trustees will now recess. Our open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071 and 551.074. Now voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any actions the board wishes to take as it results from the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in this open session. And so the time is now 7:59 PM. And if my colleagues would join me in the board conference room. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We will now reconvene and return the regular meeting. Resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees and the time is now 9:08 PM. For our next item, I would like to recognize our Director of Leadership and Development, Dr. Latracy Harris.
Good evening, President Durant, Madam Hannah Hosen, Board of Trustees and audience members. I am excited to be here today to share with you a presentation on opportunity culture and the work that we have done with this organization, as well as bring to you the benefits that this model will have for our district, as well as our timeline that we are proposing for the remainder of this school year in preparation of the, our launch. If you remember earlier this year, Dr. Hannah Hosen brought to you an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding for Sam Houston State University, as well as opportunity culture. And we are excited about the partnership that we have with these two organizations. So this work that we, that I will discuss today is aligned with the work that we've been doing with Hosen's work, as well as our leadership definition. As always, our work is grounded and closely connected to our leadership definition. This opportunity culture residency model is aligned to being outcome driven because we want our teachers to continuously grow, as well as we want our teachers to be student focused and use data to drive instruction on their campus. It's definitely aligned to being service oriented because we want our teams to be, to remain to be team focused and to continue empowering others to ensure that we are developing and supporting leadership in others. It's also aligned to be relationship centered because our teams will be collaborating as they build and a collaborative and inclusive culture. So what is opportunity culture? Opportunity culture is an initiative of public impact which helps schools restructure their instructional models in order to extend their reach of excellent teachers for more pay within recurring school budgets. The goal is to create a structure that allows excellent teachers to support more teachers on their team, as well as to replicate the practices they use in their classroom in order to ensure the success of all students on their team. This opportunity also allows our master teachers to remain in the classroom where they directly impact student outcomes. So some of the common teacher challenges that we encounter in a traditional structure is that excellent teachers only sometimes focus on their students, which means their reach doesn't extend beyond the classroom. These excellent teachers typically perform at high levels year after year. And eventually they seek career advancement outside of the classroom and sometimes outside of the district. And we definitely do not want that. So this structure allows these teachers to stay in the classroom and support the students on their grade level that they serve. This structure also, for some teachers, they may, they may feel isolated. Some of the common challenges that teachers face, they may feel isolated, especially if they are the only teacher maybe teaching that subject on their team. And then, of course, principals can feel discouraged and sometimes overwhelmed when trying to support each and every teacher on their campus. So this opportunity culture model works to solve for those challenges. So in opportunity culture models, excellent teachers lead small teams that student teachers can join as resident teachers. So looking at the diagram on the screen, the excellent teachers are in the green or aqua color. This model allows for at least one excellent or master teacher on each team. This master teacher will support their team to ensure that, that student gains, student gain and they have consistent access to excellent teaching. These master teachers are able to advance and stay in the classroom while earning more pay. And by utilizing this opportunity culture structure, teachers on the team receive daily support they need to grow and develop. That support could include the master teacher modeling lessons, observing teachers on their team, providing feedback, helping with lesson design, data analysis, intervention plans, et cetera. And then principals will be leading by driving change through distributed leadership. So this master teacher will work closely with the principal and the leadership team. These are the essential components of the opportunity culture residency model. The first component is the opportunity culture principles that guide the work and the models that are created to support the campuses. It's also important to identify excellent teachers because those excellent teachers will be able to leverage their skills to support other teachers and scholars on their team. And then resident teachers who join a team with an excellent teacher or a master teacher will be able to learn alongside that teacher and learn the skills and best practices that they're using in their classroom and they'll be able to replicate that. Excellent teachers are then allowed to apply to become an MCL, which is a multi-classroom leader. And this position is given to excellent teachers who demonstrate evidence of high student achievement. The opportunity culture model is built on five principles. The first principle is reach more students with excellent teachers and their teams. The excellent teachers will support multiple classes and impact student outcomes beyond their assigned group. So they will extend their reach. The second principle is pay excellent teachers more for extending their reach. Teachers will be able to be compensated for assigning their teams, assigned to their teams for working closely with resident teachers and ensuring the success of all the students on the grade level they serve. Third, fund the pay with regular campus based budgets. Our goal is to ensure that, ensure the sustainability of this model by utilizing the regular school budget to fund stipends beyond grant funds. We know that this model will be funded with funds from T-Class and we want to be able to sustain it once those grant funds are no longer available. Also provide protected in-school time and clarify how to use it for planning, collaboration and development. So when we say in-school time, that consists of POCs or teaching planning time. So that time will be able, be able to be used for teams to work collaboratively on lesson design, intervention plans, assessments, planning due nails, exit tickets, and whatever is needed for that team to be successful. And then lastly, the last principle is match authority and accountability to each person's responsibility. So each individual on the team is held accountable for their individual performance. And the MCL, which is the multi-classroom leader, is held accountable for not only their work, but the work of their team and the performance of all students on their grade level. The keys to a successful implementation is utilizing a well-implemented multi-classroom leader design. Also, the rigorous selection of criteria for opportunity culture teachers or residents will ensure that we select and hire teachers who have the capacity to be able to carry out the specific job and the specific role of this model. Also, the specific requirements for opportunity culture pilot schools will be very clear and we will be able to evaluate and monitor those specific requirements along the way. And also, we want to make sure that the requirements for the education preparation provider that, that we use, which is Sam Houston, we want to make sure that the requirements for our partnership are extremely clear. And then lastly, MCL, which is the multi-classroom leaders, will be able to act as the cooperating teacher of record and submit any documentation, any logs or any forms or documents that are required. So I know I've spoken a lot about the teacher residence. So I want to take a moment to level set on the. so I want to take a moment to level set on the difference between a teacher resident versus a student teacher. So a student teacher typically is assigned to the campus part-time and part of the year. Therefore, they might not have enough time to perfect their craft. They also might be mismatched with the teacher that they are assigned to, and because they are unpaid and they are interns, it may prevent equity in this position. Only individuals who are able to work without an income can assume a role as a student teacher. However, a teacher resident through Opportunity Culture will spend three to four days a week for the entire school year on a campus. That is a substantial difference from a student teacher. They will also attend district trainings and learn the springway systems and routines, so they're already familiar with those. And they will work closely with the multi-classroom leader, who is the master teacher on the team. And by working closely, they will be able to learn again those best practices. While they are working towards their certification, they are receiving compensation, which allows a diverse group of individuals to be able to participate as teacher residents. So to pair a teacher resident with an MCL, the multi-classroom teacher, it solves problems of a traditional student teaching by ensuring that they are compensated. That's what we really want to highlight. The teacher residents will be able to be compensated. Also, it will allow the teacher residents to learn highly effective instructional practices from the master teacher that they are assigned to work with. This structure will be sustained, and it's highly scalable from one campus to another campus throughout our district. And it ensures results from all teachers on the team, regardless of the students that they serve. So the cornerstone of Opportunity Culture is to leverage the expertise of a multi-classroom leader, who is tasked with the responsibility of ensuring that lessons are created to meet the needs of the students on their team. The multi-classroom teacher will also support the team by working closely with them in POCs, conducting EBTBats, and preparing them to deliver lessons. They will also work closely with them through co-teaching, through modeling, observing, and providing feedback, as well as leading weekly planning sessions. They will also be tasked with delivering professional development and supporting the principal by serving on the instructional leadership team. So these are some of the benefits of the MCL. So looking at this illustration, research shows that when teams utilize the Opportunity Culture model with MCLs, they improve in reading and math. So as you can see, student performance in math and reading started at the 50th percentile. But when incorporating an MCL, reading increased 16 to 22 percentage points, and math increased 25 to 35 percentage points. So based on the research, the Opportunity Culture model has yield results in the districts that are using this model. So some of the benefits of using this model in our district would definitely be the teacher residents will be able to receive on-the-job training. I know when I was a principal at Benneke, and we would receive student teachers, I was always so excited, because I would get an opportunity to prepare them. And then if we had a vacancy on our campus, they already learned the Benneke way. They were already in POCs, and so they would get a lot of on-the-job training. Those resident teachers will also be compensated for becoming a teacher resident. And then, of course, we'll be able to recruit them, and they're already familiar with our structures in spring, like the springway systems and routines. We want to make sure this is sustainable across the district, and the goal is to increase student achievement and for our teachers to grow. Also, another benefit for schools and for our district is career advancement. So not only will the teacher residents have the potential to become a teacher in spring, but the MCLs would then have an opportunity for advancement as they move from a teacher to a multi-classroom teacher. Public Impact, which designs and leads the National Opportunity Culture Initiative, will continue to provide support across the district by helping us select schools through our rigorous application process, as well as supporting schools with facilitating their design sessions that will be tailored to the individual needs of that campus. And then also continuing the partnership with the ultimate goal of having a positive long-term impact on student achievement. So looking at our timeline and looking at the work that we've done thus far, as well as the work that we have planned, just in August and December, we've established partnerships with Opportunity Culture, as well as Sam Houston and Central Office. The Central Office team have been trained and developed to be able to understand this model and the different roles and responsibilities of each of the participating members in this model. Also, in January, we are sharing the Opportunity Culture model with campus leaders, district leaders, and in preparation to launch our campus selection process, where schools will have the opportunity to apply. Then next, we will be hosting a design session where schools will be able to take the components of this model to tailor it towards to their needs for their campus. And then in February, we will be forming our campus-based Opportunity Culture design team, as well as conducting site visits and going out to see schools or districts who have already implemented this model as campus leaders prepare to solidify their structure and submit for approval. And then March and April, we also want to align the model to our campus budget as those schools that are selected will be gearing up to launch. And then, of course, we want to make sure that we are training our staff so they understand their roles and responsibilities, as well as the criteria, and are able to successfully implement this plan. And then we will launch, and then, of course, monitor and evaluate along the way and make adjustments as needed. So here are our next steps. Our next steps are to develop a campus selection process so that our schools will be able to apply. We want to share this information with them, as well as conduct an informational session for campus leaders to be able to ask questions and determine if this opportunity is right for their campus. Then campuses will be selected as the Opportunity Culture pilot schools, and we will work with those campuses to build the models specifically tailored for their needs. And then, of course, like I mentioned, conduct site visits and make sure that we are doing a thorough job training the campus staff. Okay, that concludes my presentation. Anyone have any questions?
I do. This is for elementary, middle, and high school, correct? All right, I'm excited about the opportunities for teachers to share best practices with each other. It looks like the organization of the teams is very flexible and that you said that they will be doing their planning together in POCs?
Yes.
Okay, so they're doing group planning. And when did they get the opportunity to observe other people teaching?
So the MCL, which is the multi-classroom leader, will have the teacher resident in their classroom. So when they're able, because it's going to be a gradual release, not like on the first day when the teacher resident shows up, but as they are able to, you know, assume some of the roles and responsibilities of leading the class, then the MCL will then be able to go and visit other teachers, observe them, provide feedback, as well as co-teach with them, model for them, disaggregate data with them, and do those things that will help them be successful.
I guess what I'm asking is, there's many times in my teaching career that we got ideas from each other. Somebody would teach a certain unit or lessons in a really interesting, wonderful, effective way. And other teachers were experienced teachers, but they wanted to go see that happen. So I was just hoping that, it sounds like this whole thing is very flexible and that they are going to be making a lot of local choices that really are going to benefit the school and that team. So I'm just hoping that even master teachers can learn from others.
Absolutely, and there will be room for that flexibility, as they will have that MCL, who will be able to circulate around the gray level and support teachers, which means that flexibility will allow them to stay in that classroom while that experienced teacher or novice teacher is then able to go and observe other teachers. So that practice definitely could be implemented.
Go ahead.
First of all, that was a really well-done presentation.
Thank you.
Normally, when these presentations are happening, I'm writing questions, and then we get to the end of the presentation, and I get to ask all my questions. And you were answering them as I was going on. So I don't really have many questions for you. Can you go to slide five, I think it is? Have you passed it? Next one, next one, next one, this one here.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
So you answered the question about how an excellent teacher becomes an MCL. So I'm clear on that. This structure sort of looks like a collegiate structure. When I was in college, it was a state school, so there were large classrooms, large lecture halls, where the professor presented. And so in that scenario, the aqua person would be the professor. And then sitting in the classroom were what we called at my school graduate student instructors. And that's where you really dug into the content, where you answered the deeper questions and sort of pull-out sessions. And so I see sometimes one of these clusters has a teaching... Is that a teacher assistant?
Yes.
So we still have teaching assistants?
In this model.
Okay, and then we have a resident. And so the resident isn't... Those are the compensated, basically, college kids, if I'm understanding.
Right, those are the students who are completing like an internship, but they're a teacher resident, and they're compensated for it in this model. So a traditional student teacher, of course, isn't compensated. But in this model, using the grant funds that we have, they will be able to be compensated.
Okay, and so this team would be responsible in this scenario for 100 students?
Right.
Okay.
And so the great thing about this structure is that master teacher in that aqua color will be able to support all the students. And that's one of the things about Opportunity Culture. The goal is to extend their reach, because traditionally, that teacher will just stay in their classroom and support the 22 students, 25 students that are assigned to them. But with this model, they will be able to support all the teachers or all the students on their gray level. So if it's 100 students, then they can extend their reach. So the practices they're using in their classroom to achieve that high performance, they will be able to support all the students, as well as the teachers, to try to reach that.
Okay, can you go forward several slides? Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Could've lost. Is it this one, this slide? I did have a question. Let me let somebody else go, and then I'll figure out what my question was, because I did have one more question.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. If you go back to the residents within the multi-classroom leader, yes, that one. The bullet, I like this idea of kind of like train the trainer, teach the teacher kind of model. I think it's great. But I have some concerns with the scalability. You mentioned here that it's highly scalable, and it's only limited by the number of multi-classroom leaders. With the shortages that we are experiencing right now with teachers, how is that being addressed within this model? Because I'm looking at the timeline, and again, we're asking teachers to do even more without taking anything off of their plate. So kind of, how has that been addressed?
So the two schools that we were able to visit in spring branch, one of the schools, so there was a vacancy or the... There was a vacancy on the team, and then that vacancy, those students were then repurposed, if you will, or assigned to other teachers. Those teachers were able to also receive a stipend through this model. And so they then had those students as their students of record, and they taught those students every day. So that's one of the things that this model really solves for, those vacancies. So to be able to not just have a vacancy, but then take that vacancy and use the funds from that vacancy to be able to support and sustain this model.
Okay. And then on the timeline, at the very end, we talk about monitor, evaluate, and improve. What kind of metrics are we talking about? Because throughout the whole presentation, I see, you know, results-driven, sustainable, all these different terms, but I don't see anything in here that really kind of speaks to what, like, how are we going to actually quantify what we're getting out of it?
One of the great things is that this model has been already implemented in another district. And so Opportunity Culture will be supporting us and creating those rubrics to be able to measure the performance of the teachers, the MCLs, as well as the teachers. One of the things that, in the job description, the MCL is aware that this position is for one year based on performance. And so throughout the time that they are MCL, throughout that year, they will have to submit different data or different evidence to show how they're performing, and how, not just their performance, but how their team is performing. So that is being defined and created with the support of Opportunity Culture.
Okay, and then I have one last question about... I gotta find it here. And it had to do with the accountability piece. How are we... Yeah, on the principal's number five says match authority and accountability to each person's responsibilities. So my question was, how are they being held accountable? I guess, again, kind of, what are those metrics, and how's that quantified?
So in the job description for the MCL, well, in order for them to apply and be hired, they have to produce evidence showing that they have yield high results in their classroom. And so then they can become an MCL. So it definitely wouldn't be a first-year teacher, because they wouldn't have those results. Throughout the time when they are an MCL, so we have different metrics that we use, like data, student data. And so not just data from their own class, but from their team. So that will be analyzed throughout the year, and performance will be measured by that, by the data. And there will be meetings along the way. One of the things that I have bi-weekly meetings with Opportunity Culture to talk about some of these data sets that have not been created or given to us yet, but in a collaboration, we'll be able to create those. And along the way, we'll also be working with and meeting with Sam Houston. And so they will be joining us in those bi-weekly meetings so that we can have those governance meetings and ensure that the criteria that we have in place is being met. And so we don't want it to be a surprise for the MCL at the end of the year to say you didn't, you know, meet the criteria or you didn't have enough growth. So those conversations will be had throughout the school year.
Thank you.
So one of the... So I found what my question was. Can you go to the slide where it shows strong gains for MCL teams? That's the one. So among the things that I appreciated about your presentation was you offered up this study, and then you offered citation of the source, which is actually a good lesson for any students that happen to be watching about citing your sources. So I really appreciated that. But that led me to the question of, that study is in 2018, and we had the pandemic. And so I was wondering about, and I think Trustee Correa spoke to this, whether there were real-world examples of Opportunity Culture and what those results had looked like outside of the study. Because the study, there's... outside of the study. Um because the study, there's control groups and there's, there's ways that studies can be manipulated. And so I want to see some real-world data and if there is any of that.
So in visiting two schools in Spring Branch, they were able to share with us their data and the gains that they made um by using this model, which, you know, one of the things that we talked about as a district team is that we definitely want to take our principals to sit and learn and hear from these teams. Um the model, just hearing the model, originally, I had one idea of what the model would look like, but then going to these two different schools, one school um used it in one unique way and then a, another school used it in a totally different way. Um but both of them had exceptional gains, which made us as the district team, you know, just reaffirm that this is a model that we really need to implement in our, in our district. And so um some of the gains that they really talked about was just not just gains from their students, but also from their teachers and really building capacity to be able to, to carry out this work and do this work and support the teacher residents, which we really want to, you know, um prepare them for when they step into a role as a first-year teacher. Because we know some of the challenges that the first-year teachers already experienced. So just being able, it was just success all around. And, you know, student data and teacher growth, um how they were performing on their end-of-the-year evaluations, as well as teacher residents being able to step into a role and be more successful as a first-year teacher than they were, than they would have been without this model being in place.
Thank you.
Some of my questions you answered. And I'm, I'm very excited about this program. When you went to Spring Branch, are you looking at following their model or is there a Sam Houston model? Or has Spring come up with their own model? And as to how they are going to identify these MCLs? Will it be, I heard you say a few minutes ago, district team. We have a district team in place now. Will they be selecting the MCLs or will it be principals or or, and I think I heard you say they have to apply, they will have to apply to be an MCL and go through interview process there. So uh do we have, we identified a team that will identify these MCLs?
So yes, we have a district uh committee and a district team who is working on or collaborating in a partnership with opportunity culture so that we can execute these different um the, the timeline that we have. And so in the rigorous selection process, um in our meeting last week, we were trained on how to execute um an effective um interview process, something different than we probably have done before, to really get to the heart of what this uh master teacher really knows and to talk about like their experiences and what they've been able to contribute to their students as well as their team. So that was one of the things that we were trained on. So it is a um application process where they will be able to apply. And the beauty about the model is it's not a one-size-fits-all. It will, we will definitely tailor the model because the, the schools that we saw were totally different. One was an elementary and one was a high school. So they had totally different structures. And some of the things that I probably wouldn't have thought of until visiting like that elementary school and seeing the structure that they had in place. And, and so there will be a design team in partnership with opportunity culture who will support us along the way so that every campus will have the team or the plan uh that's best for them. So it will not be a one-size-fits-all, like this is the, you know, Spring ISD plan and everyone has to follow this to the T. It's going to be uh very collaborative, where they have flexibility and autonomy to select the plan that works best for them. So um they may come up with having an MCL on every camp, uh on every grade level or um like in, in the elementary campus that we visited, the MCL supports multiple grade levels. So it really just depends on the capacity of the leader, the leadership team, the teachers um on the campus, if they will be able to implement, you know, that type of structure or do a, a different structure that would fit and meet their needs.
So at the high school level, did you see it by departments?
We did. We saw that um so one of the teachers had more than twenty-five students. Um and so then they had MCLs um pretty much on every, every level, but it was mostly by um by, by content. So it wasn't just, you know, the ninth grade had an MCL, the tenth grade.
English or geometry or algebra two.
Yes, definitely by content. And that team, we actually got a chance to sit down with the elementary team as well as the high school team. And we had a list of questions that we wanted answered. They were able to answer all of them. And then when we left, we collaborated and we came back together and said, wow, we've learned so much, um things that we didn't know before going in. But it, it was definitely eye-opening as to the endless possibilities of what this model could look like. And so we want, we definitely want to make sure that we're able to take the principals who are selected um to these schools to be able to see these opportunities.
I like it.
We're very excited.
Yeah. All right. Think you got a lot of questions anymore? Um, all right then, I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Um with the permission or without any objections from my colleagues, uh due to the time, I'd like to propose a change to tonight's agenda and move um public participation up as our next item. So if I don't have any objections, I'd like, I'd like to do that now. Okay. Uh so our next item on tonight's agenda will be our public participation. A, a portion of our meeting, and Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up or registered to speak under uh public participation?
Yes, Madam President, we have three speakers. Uh before I invite our first speaker up, I do have a short script I'd like to read to you. So the board invites interested citizens to address the board on any subject that they desire other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any board member, staff member, citizen, or student of the district. The board provides an opportunity on the agenda for citizens to address the board and we welcome your participation. The board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the board infringes on the guidelines as stated previously or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, each of you will have three minutes to present. Mr. Schaefer will keep time, which will be displayed on the monitors. According to law, the board may not take any action on any item that is not on the agenda. The board will not debate nor respond to any question during the meeting in order to research the question thoroughly before replying. The board will seriously consider the matter brought to its attention and respond appropriately. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal utterance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommenda- any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district and we will hear you now. So our first speaker tonight is Ebony K. And I will ask Ebony to please come to the podium. Uh the microphone is turned on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ebony K. and I'm here in regards to my little brother who was involved in an accident in Spring ISB. The school failed to get in contact with any of the listed guardians and allowed him to suffer for almost the entire school day with only one attempted phone call to each of the listed guardians. The school did not make us aware that he was injured while in their care. There was no communication whatsoever coming from the school letting us know that anything even happened to him. We pick him up every day after school and when he walked out, nobody had the decency to walk him to the car, even acknowledge or mention the injury sustained. There was no note sent home with him letting us know what happened during the school day. The school has not only our phone numbers, but also our emails and still nothing was mentioned. The school is claiming to have reached out but only called once and never considered utilizing the contact information that we have provided every school year that is on file. We took him to the doctors to be looked at and was advised to take him to the emergency room. He was then admitted for an eye infection due to the injury sustained during school hours. This is a no-brainer to see his face and know to get him medical attention. The school did not have his best interests at heart and has failed my little brother. I went to the school to get record of the incident and asked to speak with a staff member. This member was called to the front office where we discussed the incident and at this point is a breach of safety. Because any procedural protocol that was supposed to be in place was not practiced. I was given information without being asked for an ID or to sign in. I was then asked to come into the school with them to their office where there were several kids without verifying who I claimed to be. This is a huge concern because not only did the school fail my brother, the school is je- the school jeopardized the safety of all students and staff. This is upsetting and concerning that a school can allow this to happen. I feel that the situation was not taken seriously. I spoke to several people. One in particular staff member called and starts off sympathetic but proceeds in telling me they have kids and that if I don't want my kid to get injured, I should tell them not to run. And if I want, I should get him some cleats because cleats will keep him from slipping or falling down. Leading up to that conversation, another member of the staff called and personally told me that she, they applaud their staff for how the situation was handled. As you can see, based off of their responses, nobody is taking accountability and have been dismissing and belittling the situation. I feel that everyone I have went through and spoken with have been very unprofessional and heartless. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Our next speaker tonight is Charles Solomon. I will ask Mr. Solomon to come to the podium.
Evening, uh President Durant, uh Board of Trustees. Uh be very brief. Uh I'm here, uh I spoke with uh Mr. Morando as, as well as uh Mr. Manning, your Transportation Department. I'm here as a concerned uh grandparent and a concerned citizen uh regarding a route that uh on one side of the street, the kids are picked up and transported to Balmi Elementary School. But the other side of the street, the other kids are not allowed to be transported to Balmi Elementary School. This brings about a concern to me, safety reason. In that area, there's no sidewalks, there's, there's nothing. These kids are walking to school without any type of supervision. And so I'm just concerned about their safety. Uh a lot of these kids are at risk with all the things that's taking place. And uh I'm not only concerned about my grand, grandchild, but I'm concerned about those kids in that, that area. And so I, I can't understand how, I understand about the TA guidelines, the, you know, restrictions and budget and bu- budget restraints and what have you, but you know, we, we're talking about these kids' safe, safety of being at risk uh on a day-to-day basis. And so that's the reason why I'm here tonight, to uh present this, you know, to the board. I'm sure, I'm probably not the only one that have presented this, but for whatever reason, uh I just can't understand how some kids can be picked up on one side of the street. And I understand about the, you know, the radius, mile radius and what have you. But I just can't understand how, you know, again, uh these kids' safety can be, you know, put at risk on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, you have buses sitting in, in fleets that are not running, but yet these kids can't be transported to school. That's, that's right around the corner. That's, I, I, I just don't understand that. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Great. And our final speaker is J.R. Garcia. I will ask Mr. Garcia to come to the podium.
How y'all doing today? Sorry for my appearance. I just got all works on there. But uh I'm here to tell you the uh downside of y'all's policy for the mask. My son, I called up here mad as hell. I'm sure y'all, y'all know. And uh y'all gave me an exemption for my son not to wear a mask at school, which I appreciate. But uh the damage is done. Like, he would, he'd be tripped just for school. Like, we can go to the movies, we can go to the mall. You don't even think about a mask. But you tell school, oh my God, oh my God, he asked after you, you have panic attack. Man, come on, man. That is not right for our kids. Yes, I understand. Y'all think about safety and this and that. But there's a, there's a downside to everything that you do. And if you can't acknowledge that, then what you're doing is just baseless. You know, it really is. Because half these kids, they can't even see each other's faces to understand. Like, I don't know if you're brooding, under their pistol. I can't even see because I don't know. And imagine my little, my little six-year-old trying to figure it out for himself, trying to grow up. It don't happen. That's just real tough. It don't happen. So what I'm saying is, now that he can't wear a mask, you don't have to wear a mask. He feels like he should because it's wrong for him not to do it. But it's not wrong for him to not to wear it at the mall or go to the movie. But it's only wrong at school? Come on. You tell me how, how that's logical. It's not. All it is, is he's conditioned to think he has to have a mask at school. He's conditioned because all this, hey, hey, pick your mask up, put it, put it back on your nose. Do that. Quit fiddling with it. Repetition, repetition, repetition. What do you do? You remember it and you stick with it. Does it for everything, for reading, for all of it. So with that same mask thing, I need my son to be encouraged to not wear it. Even, even though you got all the other kids doing it, I need him encouraged. Just like you encouraged him to put it on, I need him encouraged to put it off. Is what I'm saying. Because he's so conditioned to think one way at school that that's just what it is. And then when he comes out, as soon as he gets in the truck, come on, hey, take it off, babe. Don't even think about it again. He's not like y'all. He's not an adult. He's a child. So you need to think about the child consequences too of it. You just can't think about the adult consequence because we are, we are old. So we already know what the deal is. But the little ones, they don't got there yet. They still innocent. So what we teach them is what we do. So my son is strong. He, he good. He listen, he mind because I teach him that. I teach him to listen to adults. Say, yes, sir, no, sir, yes, ma'am, no. But that's what I'm saying. Okay, that's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I'd like, on Mr. President, is there anything else?
There are no additional speakers, Madam President.
Okay, um. I would like to thank all of our parents coming out um during public participation and sharing your um concerns and thoughts with us. I will ask that the district uh complete that investigation and provide that information to the board. Uh as indicated, we cannot uh comment or take action this evening. All right, now we go back to the agenda items, the regular agenda. So for our next item this evening, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrooks.
Good evening, President Durant and members of the board. The item this evening begins on page seventeen. And I'm sure we all recall that just shy of a year ago, we endured a winter storm, Yuri, which was declared a state of disaster in the state of Texas by not only the governor, but also by the President of the United States. And so as a result of the damage that was caused across the state, there has been uh made, available a one-time opportunity for reimbursement of costs associated with the damages from the, the winter storm. And so through the legislative session, we have this, again, as I mentioned, one-time opportunity. So on page eighteen, you can see the application with all of the general eligibility and the process for seeking this one-time reimbursement. As well as on page nineteen, there's a requirement for our school board president, as well as for our superintendent to actually sign before the district is able to submit this application for reimbursement, which is the reason we brought it forward this evening for the board to consider allowing us to apply for these funds. And so you can see our total cost that is, we're seeking reimbursement for is seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And that is the total cost net of the insurance proceeds that we've either already received or we anticipate receiving in the near future. or we anticipate receiving in the near future. Page twenty is the spreadsheet, the actual form that we have to submit to TA that has the itemized cost. And you can see here that reconciliation of the total cost that's just broken down by the, the repair that needed to happen. And so the next page, which is page twenty-one, is not something that we have to submit to TA. But we wanted to provide this to you all because we'd imagine you'd want to know where were the repairs done. And so on page twenty-one, you can see the campus, the vendor, the expenditure that we had, what was happening, and then the cost. And so this gives you that itemization of the costs that were incurred and what we're seeking reimbursement for.
Ms. Westbrooks?
Yes, ma'am.
If we had a power outage again, would our coil, coils need replacing and our boiler heater exchanges need replacing? Or have we been able to replace those damaged items with something that can withstand ten-degree temperatures?
That's a great question and I'm so happy that we have Mr. Hutton in the audience this evening. And I'm hoping he can help us out with the response regarding that.
Ma'am, I wish I could answer in the affirmative for that. But I don't know that our facilities would ever be able to stand those kind of temperatures. The, the boilers themselves, just like your, your water heater at home, they're in an air-conditioned, unheated spaces. The failure that we have with the multiple power outages, that prevented us from running the boilers and having water flowing through there. And that's what caused the freezes. And so if all of those situations happen again, unfortunately, we would be in the same situation where we'd have to replace some of those. To harden the facilities to that level like they would in the north is just not something we have the ability to do with the facilities they have that were designed for Houston average temperatures.
And the possibility of having generators on is not a possibility?
All our, all our campuses have generators. The, the issue is our generators are sized to handle normal household loads. So can the computers lighting and stuff like that. In order to size the generators to size to be able to run the HVAC equipment would be a substantial increase in cost. And so it's just, it's, it's not something that would typically be done in the Houston environment. If you lived in New York, you would design, but you wouldn't be able to survive a hurricane. So the, the design is based on what our typical conditions were. This was just an atypical event. And we took all the precautions we could. We, we had the boilers running. We had the pumps running to circulate the water through the building. When we lost power on top of the extreme cold conditions, the pumps stopped running. When the pumps stopped running, then the water heated, you know, started cooling. And then that causes the domino effect into the, into the boilers, the heat exchanges. We, we replaced some heat exchanges where we could. We replaced whole boilers where the unit was so old that it didn't make sense to replace just the heat exchange units. But to harden the building to that, to match that environmental condition is, that's what once in a lifetime, I hope, event that we never have to see again.
I have two questions and I think you just partially answered one of them. I was curious about the variance in the cost and why Spring High is so much more than everybody else.
So it, it, it was really about what we had to do at Spring High. And so again, if Spring High School's boilers are significantly older and so finding the parts for some of that stuff, just we just, there was no replacing parts. It just, we had to replace all pieces of equipment.
That makes sense.
And then if you look at Spring High School, how Spring High School spread out and the age of the building at Spring High School, you have a lot more exterior walls and a lot more exterior places where that cold air came in and that creates additional challenges.
Okay. And then the other question, I don't, maybe, maybe Ms. Westbrooks can chime in on this, but when we, our insurance premium has increased significantly. And one of the reasons for that increase that has been cited by the insurance underwriters is sort of the changing weather patterns that we're seeing in the more extreme weather. And so as we make that adjustment in, in terms of paying our premium, I wonder about what you were talking about in terms of if we were in New York, we'd design differently than we'd design here and whether the way we're designing our equipment and preparing our facilities to withstand what we hope is a once-in-a-lifetime storm, but increasingly seems like will be more frequently than that. If there's something that we can do to sort of mitigate the insurance premiums in terms of design?
And you're absolutely correct. Incidences such as the winter storm, hopefully it's an anomaly. But we do tend to see our insurance premiums creep up after these type of events. We do have an opportunity to talk through our mitigation strategies that we have. We talk a lot about what our team does internally to monitor the way that our machinery is working and those sorts of things. And they do take that into consideration. I don't know that it has a significant impact on the premium that we pay, but we have been told that the processes and things that we have in place and the fact that we are keeping our machines and things up and going and in good working condition has been favorable when we do our, our, our premium analysis each year. And so that's coming up right about now because our premium renews on April first. So we're just starting to get some communication about what our premiums will look like over this next year. So, and we do, we turn in like our little sheets and things that we use to go through and monitor the machinery and all those sorts of things to the insurance company for what it's worth in that calculation.
Thank you.
Ms. Westbrooks, I noticed that there's some verbiage at the bottom of page eighteen under the one-time reimbursement. It talks about including any resulting electricity price increases. Was that even a concern or not even a viewpoint?
That's very interesting because we did see a significant jump in our, I believe it was our gas bill, the first gas bill after this. And so we saw some locations and one in particular was Lock Haven. Just a huge, it was about a four hundred percent increase in that one month. But we're not actually able to seek reimbursement for that increase. It's only if your rate changed that you can seek reimbursement. So we saw that increase, but it's just a cost that the district had to absorb.
So what there was is, i- i- if you'll remember back to the storm, a, a lot of energy providers were doing spot pricing. And with the sudden increase in demand, the spot pricing went up dramatically. Thousands of percent in some cases. We have a fixed rate electrical plant. And so we didn't see that jump in the spot price because we have a confirmed rate. And so our electric bill wasn't hit as badly. The, the negative about losing all the power was we didn't have electrical draw. So we, we saw that. We didn't see that big electrical jump, right? But we did see a, a little increase in the gas usage, especially at Lock Haven where the police were still conducting business and that building is hardened to extent where we're running all the HVAC off the generators because of its usage.
I, I don't know about the other trustees, but seeing this list, I am in awe that you got all of this fixed. And we restored heat and functionality to our schools as quickly as you did. Kudos to your department.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the application seeking reimbursement for costs associated with damage to district facilities as a result of the winter storm Yuri.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the application seeking reimbursement for costs associated with damage to district facilities as a result of winter storm Yuri.
Second.
It has been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees approve the application seeking reimbursement for costs associated with the damage to district facilities as a result of the winter storm Yuri. Is there any additional discussion?
I did have one last question. Sorry, I'm a little late. Was, are there any restrictions to that payment that we get back as far as the funds? Because I noticed it goes, I think it said it goes back to the general fund.
That's correct. It will go back to general fund. We do have some offset that we need to give back to our maintenance department because of course, as always, we pay for things upfront because we have to, we have to keep, keep operations going. But I think we earmarked about two hundred thousand that we'll put back in our maintenance budget so they can go back to their regularly scheduled maintenance projects that were put off last year as we were covering these costs. But other than that, they're not restricted.
Thank you, Trustee Correa. I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With my detour on the agenda tonight, I skipped an item, so I'm gonna have to back us up a little bit once again. And for our next agenda item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resources and Human Capital and Accountability tonight, Ms. Hill.
Thank you very much, President Durant, Trustees, Cabinet members and all those who have joined us here in the boardroom as well as those online. And we are coming before the board tonight to ask for an approval of the instructional calendar for the 2022-2023 school year. As you recall, last Thursday during our work session, we reviewed both and there, and on page thirteen in your packet is the option A calendar and on page fifteen is the option B calendar. We reviewed the results of the survey from last week and determined that there was a ten difference vote between option A, ten more people voted for option A than option B. At that time, the board also asked for a recommendation from the administration and the administration recommended that we select option A as our instructional calendar for this year. And so we come before you tonight to call for, in accordance with Board Policy EB Local, for a vote by the board to approve our instructional calendar for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. So I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty-two, twenty-three instructional calendar option A.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty-two, twenty-three instructional calendar option A.
I second that.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty-two, twenty-three instructional calendar option A. Is there any discussion? Okay. Then I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Any abstentions? So we have four in favor, one opposed and one abstention. The motion does carry. Thank you, everyone. All right. So our next agenda item. Tonight is the consent agenda. And I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda.
Madam President, I have moved that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Second motion.
It's been moved by Dr. Governor Jensen and seconded by Trustee Ron the Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? We know we spent quite a bit of time discussing items on the consent agenda Thursday night. So without any further discussion, I'll go ahead and move forward with the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Anyone oppose? That motion carries unanimously. Okay. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed session in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, Texas five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, Texas five-five-one dot zero-seven-four and Texas five-five-one dot zero-seven-six. No voting will take place in the closed session. Any action the board takes or wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed session will take place after the board has reconvened in open session. And the time now is ten fifteen. We will now resume the open session tonight at ten twenty-one PM. Seeing that we have no items from our closed session for discussion tonight, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move to adjourn.
I seconded.
It has been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Jensen that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously and we now adjourn our regular board meeting tonight at ten twenty-two PM.